Welcome words were not heard, so sorry for that. I repeat, welcome back and with we, we would like to welcome you back. I mean me as Dorothea Palenberg, I'm your moderator with the team around me. This is the team of the German Association for Housing, Urban and Spatial Development. And the conference is hosted by the Federal Ministry of the Interior, Building and Community. We are jointly enjoying today the final conference of the whole web series that accompanied the renewal of the Leipzig Charter during the German EU Council Presidency. We look back on a kickoff conference that happened 3rd of September, where we would, where we tried to understand what the new Leipzig Charter wanted to contribute. Well, then on 9th of September, the cities had their platform, could speak, and the frontrunner cities could demonstrate how this principle, how the objectives of the Leipzig Charter could be translated into action. And today, the final conference, we of course look a little bit back, but we also want to set the right framework. So the title and the punchline of today's conference is empowering cities to act. What EU policies are needed? Again, as you would, as you probably already have seen in the opening slide that was shown, you can participate on this conference via Slido. Of course, you are also free to comment in the YouTube stream, but we have a very close view on what's happening at Slido. All the questions that come in are handed over to me, and we are really happy that we can exchange with you. It's always a little bit difficult for us as a team, as a moderating team, to envision you as participants. And for you, it's probably also difficult to sit next to each other, to not spot your favorite colleague and have a coffee with him. So try to imagine this and let us enjoy this conference in the spirit. I'm just checking whether I have said everything that's organizationally important. Yes. So, we start with three input statements that are more than welcoming words, that also set a frame and really introduce us, do a little bit more than introducing us to the topic. The fun part about the first three speeches is that they already reflect the multi-level approach of the Leipzig Charter. So we have a contribution from the national level, from the regional slash city level, and from the EU level. Let's start with Dr. Susanne Lotter-Moser. She's the Deputy Director for Urban Development at the German Federal Ministry for the Interior, Building and Community. And the title of her speech is never, not less than implementing the new Leipzig Charter. So that sounds dynamic and implementation oriented. And Ms. Lotter-Moser, we are looking forward to your speech. The floor is, the virtual floor is yours.
Thank you, Mrs. Palenberg. Thank you for the introduction and a warm welcome to all of the participants. Good morning, everybody. As you said, to the third and the final sequence of the conference, Europe's Cities Fit for Future. Today's session is dealing with the question, what can be done on EU level to empower cities and regions to be fit for future? Empowering cities for act has been the overall strategic vision for us in the last two years of work on the new Leipzig Charter and most recently also on the second document. A very long title, I quoted here once and quoted then only in a short version. It has the title "Implementing the New Leipzig Charter Through Multi-Level Governance: Next Steps for the Urban Agenda for the EU." The goal of empowering cities, so that they are capable to fulfill all their tasks for ensuring good living conditions, is at the core of any urban policy. And how can measures EU-level support this goal? I'm very pleased to join the discussion at this point and want to outline how the Leipzig Charter and the urban agenda for the EU will be implemented in the future. Before going into that, I would like to interconnect the last two days of the webinar. On the first part, on 3rd of September, my colleague Tillmann Buchholz, a professor of Silke Weitner, presented the outline of the new Leipzig Charter. They led you through the three spatial levels of cities, the three dimensions of European cities, and discussed the key principles of good governance, as well as the ways local authorities and cities can be empowered. They also gave you an insight into broad discussions we have had throughout the last two years with stakeholders all over Europe, ranging from practitioners, researchers, politicians to associations and urban networks. I can proudly say that the new Leipzig Charter is a result of this joint effort. The same holds true for the development of the implementation document. This document will map out the further development of the urban agenda for the EU. The work of this document started at the beginning of the year and is still under negotiation. The new Leipzig Charter serves as a strategic framework for urban development in Europe. It puts the common good at the centre of policy. It provides key principles of good urban governance and describes the many fields of urban policy for which cities and local authorities need to be equipped. During the conference, there have been shown various good examples on how these ambitions can come alive. The Leipzig Charter and the urban agenda for the EU are connected with each other in such a way that with the adoption of the pact of Amsterdam and the urban agenda for the EU, strategic goals in urban development were translated into actions. And corresponding to this link, also the new Leipzig Charter shall have a link to the urban agenda. The urban agenda for the EU and thematic partnerships have proven to be a big success in strengthening the urban dimensions at the European scale, making EU policies more urban-friendly and bringing together stakeholders from different governance levels. Taking into account the huge progress that the urban agenda has facilitated, the German presidency, together with its partners, especially in the trio presidency, intends to advance this instrument based on the experience and assessment of the thematic partnerships of the last four years. In order to make the urban agenda even more impactful in the future, it is necessary to comprehend in which ways instruments are a reflection of aims, values and strategies. Connecting and aligning the urban agenda for the EU with the new Leipzig Charter, which responds to new societal framework conditions and emerging challenges, will provide the urban agenda also with key principles and objectives for integrated, sustainable and resilient urban development. Therefore, we intend to agree on two documents at the informal meeting of ministers in Leipzig in November. The new Leipzig Charter and the already mentioned implementation document for the new Leipzig Charter. It further development of the urban agenda for the EU. What is the substance of the implementation document? First of all, there are the partnerships. The urban agenda for the EU has been unfolding along fourteen thematic partnerships, all of which are related to the big and major urban matters and pressing challenges, ranging from digital transition to urban poverty. The partnerships have allowed stakeholders from the local and region level to directly cooperate with all levels of governance. They are therefore providing a blueprint for better funding, better regulation, and have promoted a fruitful exchange on urban issues across Europe. The implementation document reaffirms and builds on this work. It attempts to respond to the issues raised in an assessment of these thematic partnerships. The implementation document will emphasize that the multi-level and multi-stakeholder partnerships will remain the core delivery modes of the urban agenda. You may ask what will be new to the partnerships. The results of the assessments point towards the need for both sufficient funding and effective implementation structures based on multi-level governance to strengthen the urban agenda. How can this be done? On the one hand, European initiative on the cohesion policy can serve as a source of support to the partnerships. That is why we are intending to introduce a support structures in form of a secretariat funded by the European Urban Initiative. This secretariat will serve multiple purposes: monitoring and assessing the urban agenda process, supporting the establishment of new thematic partnerships, disseminating knowledge, supporting the partnerships with expertise, fostering the implementation of actions and providing intergovernmental support, for example to the trio presidency and the bodies of the cooperation on urban matters at the European stage. On the other hand, we will create a more flexible setup of the partnerships, for example when it comes to the duration or outputs. Also, there is a need to work in the partnerships in a more targeted or focused framework, calling for more concrete objectives of the partnerships. Recently, there have been very global or general titles for partnerships, such as urban mobility or climate adaptation. These general focuses have proven to be very challenging in a multi-level and multi-stakeholder setting. Additionally, work is going on regarding the development of new mechanisms to deliver on the objectives of the urban agenda, such as the clustering of actions. The first exploration of a digital cluster is currently down by Finland and is very promising. The current partnerships have provided numerous valuable actions to improve EU policies. However, only few actions target the better funding or better regulations trends of the urban agenda. These trends are paramount in order to make the policies more urban-friendly. It is therefore that we suggest to provide more legal expertise to the thematic partnerships and the other potential multi-level governance instruments, linking them to the annual work programme and to the better regulation agenda, such as the Fit for Future platform. One more thing I would like to point out and which is really important to improve the urban agenda is the principle of to go to talk about it. The partnerships need to be supported in the dissemination of the outputs, the internal communication and capitalization. Thus, the establishment of communication hubs in each member state can help improve communication among the stakeholders of the partnerships, but also beyond, and capitalize on the valuable work and results of the partnerships. This should at the same time be in line with the principle of subsidiarity and existing structures in member states. The discussion on how such communication hubs or national contact points should be implemented in the future and what tasks they should include is still ongoing. As you can see, we are addressing quite a few things in the implementation document. We do not only link the key principles and objectives of the new Leipzig Charter to the urban agenda of the EU. We also strengthen multi-level and multi-stakeholder cooperation and make room for a more impactful instrument. We believe that this will result in an overall stronger urban dimension in Europe and support the goals of cohesion policy. Although the process of the last five years of the new Leipzig Charter and the implementation document is still ongoing, the strategic orientation is clear. We are looking forward to European cities, which is strong, just, green and productive, which has the power to act and which includes all of its citizens in the sense of the common good. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lotter-Moser, for this dynamic and concrete speech. I think it was a great introduction. I see that Normans Popens and Wenke Christoph were listening to it carefully. So the next step here would be the question from neighborhood to region, how to get Berlin future-proof? And I know that Wenke Christoph, the permanent secretary for housing in the city or slash land of Berlin, is also related to two of the partnerships, urban agenda partnerships. So the city of Berlin is quite active in this context. I have also read a little bit about you. So you were very active in the Rosa Luxemburg Foundation and a very important keyword that came across was solidarity cities. I liked that a lot. So you are an expert for urban movements and actors. And please share with us your perspective from the city or the land of Berlin. Thank you very much. And the virtual floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Ms. Palenberg, and thanks for inviting us as the city of Berlin into this conversation. Yeah, here is Lotter-Moser, here is the Popens. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very pleased that the series of conferences on the new Leipzig Charter is focusing on European cities being fit for the future. The pandemic, the coronavirus pandemic has shown us once again that cities have an important role in overcoming crisis. And we are still in the process of dealing with the crisis. And I think that we've all experienced our neighborhoods, our cities having a very important role in this. Together with you, I would like to take a look today on how Berlin is preparing for the future and what expectations we have of EU policy, especially the European urban agenda. And so I was very pleased to listen to the plans and the great suggestions by Ms. Lotter-Moser already. Whether European cities are fit for the future is measured by many criteria. It's a matter of sustainability, of quality of life, of resilience, of innovative strength, but also of commons, of solidarity, as you may, of the citizens in our cities and how they live together and are able to live together. But whether cities future-proof is also reflected in the modern urban development policy. Two questions seem particularly important. First, how well are the relationships between the city and its surroundings organized? And second, what extent are modern principles and concepts of urban development put into practice? A city like Berlin is well-prepared for the future, I think, if it takes all special levels: the neighborhood, the district, the city, the city region, and the metropolitan region into account. The new Leipzig Charter also focuses on these levels of development, these levels of policy also to be more closely interrelated. So we must create good connections between the special levels and incorporate all the parties involved at these levels to overcome the challenges that are ahead of us, be it pandemics, be it climate change, be it migrations, be it rising rents and housing prices, for example, in a city like Berlin. For Berlin, this means implementing an integrated urban development together with the cities and communities in our surroundings, in Brandenburg, coordinating initiatives and measures of urban regional development and to this end, using suitable governance and cooperation formats. Together with Brandenburg, Berlin forms a capital region and to other metropolitan regions, the interrelationships between the economy, the labour market, energies, in energy and infrastructures and other areas are developing rapidly. Cooperation is key and very close and has been very close for many years. For example, we are conducting joint spatial planning with the state of Brandenburg for many years now. We have set up a joint authority for spatial planning, which is also part of my administration. And to implement these plans, the state governments make coordinated use of EU structural funds for projects beyond our borders. Let me give you two examples for the joint planning. One special feature is the so-called settlement star. It structures future settlement development in our region across or oriented along the star shapes around Berlin, along the railroad lines from Berlin. So we are connecting traffic and mobility infrastructure development with housing development and settlement development in our capital region. At the same time, the spaces between the axes are interconnected in an open space network and are such protective from further development and settlement. A second special feature is our community neighborhood forum between Berlin and Brandenburg, which is a successful instrument of inter-commune cooperation. At the forum, representatives of our districts exchange ideas with municipalities in Brandenburg on issues of urban and regional development. Of outstanding importance here are topics of transportation and housing that are already mentioned. And this is because this is where we see the greatest need for joint action. Since this year, the forum also has a legal forum, as a registered administrative association, and thus is a firmly established institution of cooperation in the metropolitan region. Both examples show how we think that the capital region, where we think, how we think of urban and spatial development in our capital region as being a closely interlinked idea and practice. Whether a European city is fit for the future is also reflected in the way it takes up and implements modern approaches to urban development. The new Leipzig Charter clearly formulate the principles of sustainable, integrated urban development. In Berlin, we have successfully been implementing these principles for many years. And thus, we of course support this approach of the Leipzig Charter. We act for the common good when we attach importance to the high quality of life of Berliners. And when we focus also on the social inequalities and imbalances that we see in a growing city, for example, focusing on housing next to questions of planning good and just and green neighborhoods, especially when it comes to the new neighborhoods we are building in Berlin. This includes constructing beautiful squares, large number of parks, parks sufficient open spaces, but also easily accessible social and cultural institutions offerings and strong neighborhoods. We use an integrated and place-based approach when we focus on broad participation of the population in urban development. This is a special feature that we've been working on in our Berlin neighborhood management initiative for number of years since 1999. Which also includes the principle of co-creation and participation when we place the management of neighborhoods in joint responsibility of presidents. This neighborhood management initiative has been able to stabilize disadvantaged neighborhoods for years. Neighborhoods that cannot keep place with the overall urban development in the city. And this initiative involves residents in the development of the neighborhoods and strengthening social cohesion and building stable local networks and including the participation of many Berliners, new and old ones. And we've been establishing this as a brand. It has also won the European Regional Stars Award in 2013 for its innovative approach, and we're happy to continue this program and journey. Ladies and gentlemen, for us in Berlin, as for many other cities in Europe, the principles of the new Leipzig Charter are a matter of course in urban development, as I hope for you. Nevertheless, it is important that we all commit ourselves to these principles because they are the basis for making our European cities fit for the future. I therefore expressly welcome the new Leipzig Charter as a central instrument for strengthening cities in Europe. We will continue to implement it with great commitment in Berlin. I would like to take the opportunity to speak about another important instrument of European urban policy that also Ms. Lotter-Moser mentioned, the urban agenda of the EU. It has noticeably strengthened the urban dimension of EU policies since 2016. With this multi-level governance approach, the urban agenda ventured into something new. Representatives of all groups and levels relevant to urban development work in this, in this mentioned fourteen partnerships to solve urban challenges. Berlin has been involved in the agenda from the beginning in actually three partnerships, in the partnerships for migrants and refugees, for jobs and skills, and for cultural heritage. So I'm very pleased about the decision to continue the urban agenda in conjunction with Leipzig Charter and with Lotter-Moser's explanations of how you want to strengthen the partnership approach in this, in the urban agenda. In Berlin, we support this approach and are committed to strengthening the urban agenda. Now let me say a few words about the importance of European structural policy for cities like Berlin. The Berlin neighborhood management is a good example of how we use European structural funds in conjunction with federal and state funds for the development of our city. With European support, we've been able to make Berlin's urban development more democratic and to upgrade disadvantaged neighborhoods in over 6,000 projects since the year 2000. EU structural policy has thus made a decisive contribution to our successes at the local level. Our Berlin projects also show what structural policy can achieve, making Europe tangible for the people on the ground and strengthening their connection to Europe. Supporting cities with structural funds is money well-spent. After all, the cities are not only reducing inner-city imbalances. They are also strengthening their innovative capacity and productivity and they're investing in environmental and climate protection. In this way, they are and remain important motors for future-oriented sustainable development in Europe. We welcome the fact that a political goal for sustainable, integrated urban development has been formulated by the European Structural Funds under the heading of a Europe closer to its citizens and that appropriate funds are to be provided. For example, in the new urban initiative. However, three points are important to us for the further negotiations. First, the European urban initiative should be shaped together with cities and regions. The principles of partnership and the multi-level approach set out in the Leipzig Charter should guide action. Second, the urban agenda for the EU and its partnerships should be strengthened by adequate financial support from structural funds, by inclusion in the work programmes of the European Commission and the Council Presidency, and by regular consultations of the partnerships in the European Parliament. A last point, the new structure, the new instruments of the European Recovery Plan, REACT EU and the recovery and resilience facility must also be effective in cities to help them cope with the consequences of the coronavirus crisis. To this end, it is important to closely involve the cities in the preparation of the national recovery and resilience plans from the very beginning. The mistake of the European semester must not be repeated where cities were left out of the national reform programmes. With this in mind, we wish the German Council Presidency every success in the negotiations and hope that the European structural funding will start on time at the beginning of 2021. And of course, I wish us all and you all a productive third conference day.
Thank you very much, Ms. Christoph, for all sort of dynamic, concrete and graspable illustrative speech. I think it helps the audience a lot in these COVID times to participate and follow your speech. Thank you very much for this. I remember my first project in Berlin 25 years ago was about the cooperation between the city and its surroundings. And when I see how this developed and deepened in a professional routine way, I always think, well, we move on. So that's very good. Thank you very much. I think Dr. Lotter-Moser and you have offered a lot of topics, of aspects to refer to by Normans Popens. But first of all, let me tell you, Mr. Popens, this transition from this blue sky that I see behind Wenke Christoph and this blue, this blue design that I see in your background, this is excellent. So thanks for this. We have positioned you as third speaker. So you also have the opportunity to pick up some of the statements that have already been said. So because your speech tackles the fact how the EU empowers our cities to act. You are the deputy general for regional and urban policy at the EU Commission. You are also deeply related to the Commission's urban innovative actions initiative. We have Slido questions step by step coming in. If you would like to talk about how these cooperative approaches that were also emphasized by Ms. Christoph and Dr. Lotter-Moser could happen in COVID times, you are welcome to refer to this. Otherwise, we pick up this topic already later. So thank you for being with us. And the virtual floor is finally yours after I talked a lot. Sorry for that.
Thank you, Ms. Palenberg, and thank you for your wonderful presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Ballenberg, and thank you for your wonderful introduction and also for giving me a military rank. Deputy generals are in the army. I'm a deputy director general. It's good to start with some jokes, though when we work virtually it's difficult because I have no idea to whom am I talking to and I don't know if you laugh at me or at my joke. But thanks a lot for inviting me. And of course, I want to also thank you the German Presidency, Dr. Lotte Moser, for again summarizing. We are really looking at the German Presidency as really the brave presidency because we have so many tasks to be achieved. I mean, there is a deal of the multiannual financial framework and we need to finish, I mean, all the regulations, everything that to deblock, like Ms. Christoph said, we need to make sure that the EU investment starts flowing in two thousand twenty-one. And we are not talking only about structural funds, common agricultural policy. We talk about the new generation EU. We talk about specific instruments we are now creating for crisis measures such as React EU. We talk about the Just Transition Fund for the Green Deal, Green Transition and Recovery and Resilience Facility, which is a completely new instrument and which is supposed to really help member states, regions, cities, all stakeholders really to ensure that this recovery and we come back to the path of sustainable development all over in Europe. And this is a huge task, so it's not just for the commissions, also for the presidency now, for the member states and parliament to agree and then come, then together we will start implementing, hopefully as soon as possible. So in this context, I would like to thank you, Dr. Lotte Moser, and the German Presidency, urban team for not putting aside the urban agenda. Of course, cities are key actors in all developments, but it's true that we were afraid that with this overwhelming situation which we faced after Corona, we will not have a new Leipzig Charter. We will, I understand, and thank you for that and congratulations. We will be working with you and participating and hopefully we can see each other in Leipzig or another German town because this virtual work is sometimes a bit annoying, to say it mildly. But nevertheless, I tried to, in few words, to say how the Commission approaches, obviously, the new period, the future. And I'm very, very happy to hear that it's not the Commission or some scientists who talk about functional territories and cooperation. It's a Berlin city who explains how they work together with Brandenburg, with the surrounding areas. And this is something which now I think is a relative normal thing, that cities say that this is a thing to do. And this is absolutely to the, you know, honey to my ears, to the ears, because we've been saying for the last five, six years that in future, when we talk about urban areas or cities, we are not talking about city centers or purely enclosed administrative territories called, you know, cities. We are talking about functional urban areas. We are talking about rural urban cooperation and linkages. And that is a precondition also in future, I think, to deblock even more funding to urban areas and to see how this territorial, you know, development in Europe takes place in a most sensible way. And that it gives the citizens obviously access to services, quality of life and welfare. But at the same time, it also ensures that there is a boost to economic development. What was said by Ms. Christoph, the innovation and research needs to be fostered. And we know that also in the context of crisis, there are really many challenges. And this Green Deal, Green Transition, Digital Transition, Urban Mobility was mentioned. All of these themes are part of our discussion under the EU Urban Agenda. And we have been working since Amsterdam Pact together to put some concrete substance into these partnerships. And this is a very, again, still innovative way to work. It pays off because everybody is involved. And we really were expecting a lot from these partnerships. And it's true, we are now more than one hundred actions designed in different action plans coming from the thematic partnerships. And we need to take stock and we need to analyze whether we should, you know, how can we maybe better concentrate our efforts? How can we also design tasks not just for the EU level but for everybody? How can we also progress better in implementing these actions under these action plans and how we better streamline that work? Because of course we need to cover everything and we do support and will continue supporting this integrated approach under which, you know, you have every theme then being discussed. But we also need to prioritize better and we need to see. Because it's good to say that our cities, of course, they are sustainable, green, inclusive and sustainable and, you know, they need to work like that. But we also need to prioritize within and help cities who starts to say, okay, now I want to achieve all this, but where do I start? We need to have the ability to have the self-analysis and see where are my gaps in my urban, you know, functional territory and where do we start and which would be the priority? And obviously, the funds will play a crucial role, I believe. And thanks again for referring to structural funds. We will continue supporting cities through thematic calls. But what is very important and for the first time, we are having introduced also the policy Objective Five. And we only have five objectives in the new period, which is not a thematic. It recognizes that territorial development, urban development, can be an objective as such. And within that, then you can choose the right themes according to your priorities. And this is, I think, something which Policy Objective Five gives us more opportunities also to work not just with member states and regional authorities, but with urban authorities, urban rural authorities, to see how we can better fit the investment needs and match them also from the structural funds in future. So I really look forward still to putting a lot of substance under this new Policy Objective Five, where we want to support functional territories and cooperation. We will of course continue with thematic calls and their cities are quite experienced. They benefit a lot though for innovation and research. We are designing also together with RTD now the city's mission, a mission of cities which is based on innovative, green city approach. And there are many other initiatives, urban mobility, for example. We want to make a big priority out of it also in future. We see that it will feature not just in our normal structural funds, it will feature probably in Just Transition Fund. And we do know that the mobility, or it's not just the mobility of people, mobility of goods, it could be a bottleneck for becoming a real green city. And there are not so many choices on the table. So we need to work together both on the innovative side and then also on the real delivery under the different urban mobility modes. So I think we recognize all that and this will be part of our programming. We are renewing, now we are renewing informal dialogue still because the regulations need to be finished. But we are talking to everybody, we are renewing our dialogue with all member states and all regions to really talk about the substance of programs and projects in these programs, the criteria, project calls and everything. And this is a time to get really active for cities also because some countries are sending to us draft programs. From the Commission, we insist you need to have a stakeholders dialogue. It's actually a requirement in our regulation. They should be published on internet, people should have a serious dialogue everywhere across Europe. But you tell me if there are problems because we need to make sure that there is transparency, ownership from different stakeholders. And the program that we will approve as a member state or regional or national program, that it has a local ownership and it has the right measures foreseen that we can implement it later on. Because we do have some difficulties sometimes with absorption and this is something we should of course avoid in the future. So we are very optimistic about that. So what we do on top, of course, we will continue supporting the EU Urban Agenda. You know that we ensure that the Commission participates across all the partnerships. So it's not just Regio, we have all DGs coming according to the semantics of this partnership. But we try to see also the overview and we will continue supporting, of course, secretaries and we will do the reporting and we will come up with some radical ideas. No, I'm joking, no radical ideas, but some good constructive ideas to improve how we run the EU Urban Agenda. And I think to see how we can make it more efficient, how we can better prioritize and streamline that a little bit is one of our preoccupations. Now, we don't do it alone. I think many of you, I hope, were in Porto in our cities forum with our commissioner Ferreira, who you see actively, also actually a believer in cities and supporting them. And we will continue doing those together because we want to do now, next year, also the big cities forum in conjunction with the world forum because I think Europe also has certain commitment to the world. I mean, we are part of the global system and there we participate in this global cities agenda under the UN Habitat. And next year it will take place in Poland, the big event. So I think it's a good chance for Europe again to show the leading, the lead in the world and how we do it. Because I think that in many, many other parts of the world, the cities are facing huge challenges and the problems are much, much bigger than here in Europe. And we are seen as a very advanced also in promoting this cooperation between different levels of governance and also different territories such as rural and urban. So in parallel, we will be supporting that, what we are doing and that is in the proposal. And we are trying to put together all the instruments of support for cities. So this is why we are creating the European Urban Initiative. It will encompass everything we do now, which is urban innovative actions, which is functioning as a separate instrument and we've had a huge success on that. We want to capitalize and communicate on the results of urban innovative actions instrument. This will be part of European Urban Initiative. We will keep supporting knowledge sharing under that. So the networks will be run by us and we will invite cities and we will try to make sure that everybody shares with each other the outputs, the whatever, the theories, the conclusions of projects under innovative actions but also under mainstream programs. We of course continue with the urban earmarking of six percent, which is one percent increase, but this is really to empower cities to make their choices within our programs. And obviously, we also will support the urban agenda under this initiative and we will try to make sure that also initially we wanted Urbak, which is our knowledge program for cities, to be part of this initiative. Okay, member states decided otherwise, so we have to work on the complementarities with other instruments, particularly Urbak. It's very important what was said on the New Recovery and Resilience Facility. We fully agree cities should participate in designing those recovery plans. We do have a task to ensure the complementarity between structural funds and this instrument that's written in both regulatory frameworks. So we are working, we are involved, but there is a recovery task force who will run. But I can assure you that-
Mr. Popens, that already answers, just to make a very short interjection. This answers one of the incoming questions that were rated quite high. How are you planning to support local authorities' participation in national recovery plans? Are you foreseeing the application of a partnership principle? So I just wanted to tell you that you are naturally already answering some slide-o questions and also tell this to the audience.
Thank you. I'm not seeing the questions and I'm not seeing any reaction in the audience. So I'm sorry if I, you know-
Well, basically, the highest rated question, to put this in the last minutes of your speech, to integrate this, to give you the chance to do that, is to really dig a little bit deeper on how is the Commission planning to support the implementation of the new Leipzig Charter? Is there a roadmap in place? How to go beyond the cohesion funds? So that's the highest rated question we have in place. So just to dig a little deeper there and also of course-
You're echoing in my ears now.
Well, it's the implementation, the implementation of them, yeah.
No, of course, implementation is key. I mean, we can decide beautiful things and if they are not implemented, then it's crap simply. So all I'm saying is that we need to make sure that really we work on all fronts. So EU Urban Agenda, yes, we will keep supporting. This is why we are designing your urban initiative, European, in a way that it will include support to urban agenda, to the secretaries, to the participation of cities, to have the Commission-only expertise being part of there and to work on action plans. And we will be reporting to everybody, to the member states, to parliament, to you, on what is happening and what are our views through the cities forum, through networks, through official in the council. So that's clear. On the cohesion policy, we need to work on the fact that cities can choose their priorities, can do the right projects, which are priority, within the Green Deal, within the transition, within the crisis context, everything. But again, the prioritization needs to happen either through thematic calls, also the Policy Objective Five, which gives more margins for cities to choose even themes such as security of public spaces, support to cultural heritage. That is a PO five design which allows to do all that, if that's part of your integrated development strategy and particularly functional territories, of course rural links and cities. But we also want to, of course, work more on this complementarity. So Recovery and Resilience Facility, we cannot impose involvement of cities, but I think it's necessary. And we have experience with our programs and partnership agreements that it needs to have a big multi-stakeholder discussion if you are serious about it. How we will do the complementarity, let's see. We have to set up the Just Fund. Again, cities who are located in those territories which we will cover by Just Fund should become very active because they should be seen as part of a development for that territory who is impacted by the move to the green transition, by green transition measures. So I think again, it gives a lot of chances for cities. And what we need to do is we need to work with all other actors. We work with EIB, you've seen, we have the Urbis Initiative, we're trying to coordinate with them. Under just mechanism, we will have also a new public loan facility where again, cities who need more funding for green transition can get it both from the EU budget and from the EIB as a facility. We will put it together again, hopefully earlier than later, but from two thousand twenty-one. So there will be much more, I think, also means for cities, both to receive funding also in a better way, to adjust that funding to your concrete needs. And also, I think, much more possibilities to have a real knowledge sharing, to get really ideas on where to start, how to do this. And we will continue supporting all that also in future. So we are very committed. But obviously, we also, we are part of the big setup with member states, regions, with you, with urban and local authorities. But don't be shy, you know, work with us too. I mean, send your comments. We are not a big DG, but as a commission, I think we can manage to be useful, okay? Thank you.
That was a very humble last. Thank you, Mr. Popens, for your contribution. And also thanks for being so dialogue, ready to be so dialogue-oriented. I think it's for the audience, it's important. So thanks, thank you to all three of you. I realized that some of you had to leave quickly. So also, Ms. Christoph, thank you for staying, listening, participating. That's very helpful. These video conferences, in contrary to the larger conferences that was originally planned in Berlin, are always a little bit shorter. So they also only have the chance to open the door, to get people interested, that they want to learn more about certain connections, about certain policies. And so it's a little bit, it has always this atmosphere of triggering people to dig a little deeper. So we never have the chance to really elaborate fully on a topic, which we would of course love to do. So thanks for staying with us and thanks for contributing. I would like to move on to the next topic, which is another door that we would like to open. That's the door to the conference that was held on ninth of September, where the frontrunner cities could present themselves and where the translation into action was reflected in three sessions that correspond to the three columns, thematic columns of the Leipzig Charter, productive, green and just. And we have three excellent urban, urban program experts and urban lead experts with us that hosted these sessions. I just share the names with you, but please have a look at the speakers booklet, get to know your speakers. I just share the names with you, but please have a look at the speakers booklet, get to know your speakers. And you will learn that these three hosts of the sessions of ninth of September are really experts in their field and very, very engaged urban developers in a wider sense. So we talk, we would like to hear something about Eddie Adams from EA Consulting. Please wave at us, Eddie. Hello. He covered session of productive cities. We can welcome Marceline Bono from Resilience Solutions. Please wave at us. Thank you, Marceline. Also a very active and engaged initiative. And then we have the urban expert Niels Scheffler. An urban expert is also the name of the company of the initiative. So you covered, Niels, you covered the session, Just Europe, sorry, Just Cities. Marceline, you covered the green cities and Eddie, you covered the productive cities. Before, in order to probably get a little impression and find the essence of what really happened in your session, of what the frontrunner cities really did and shared and contributed, we had agreed initially that we would like to show this as some kind of picture maybe. So you all had some kind of homework where you were asked to draw a picture that grasps the essence. Eddie, let's start with you, productive cities. What did you draw? Try to hold it into the camera and try to learn what it is.
Here's our, here's the image. It looks like a flying dog, it looks like a flying dog, but it's not a flying-
Let's ask the people in Slido also what they think it is, but yes, very nice. Thank you.
Okay. So this is, as I say, it's not a flying dog, it's a phoenix. So and I guess some key themes were reinvention, reincarnation, resilience, the notion of rising from the ashes. Because as the 2008 financial crisis stopped us in our tracks, so too has the pandemic stopped us in our tracks and it forced us to appraise where we are. So cities need to be resilient, they need to be agile, they need to be humble. A word you just used, Dorit, in relation to Mr. Popen's input. And I think also this is a time for listening. As Hendrik Jan from Rotterdam said, we don't own the future. So we may think we control the world, but nature has a very clever way of reminding us that in fact, other things are going on. So I thought the phoenix was a good way to just embody some of those things that are happening right now.
Thank you very much. Marceline, you also belong to this group of three experts on urban development. So let's see your drawing.
So thank you, Dorit. Good morning, everybody. I think mine is quite self-explanatory. I mean, at least it's quite obvious for what it is. And I picked it because, so when thinking about a green city, well, first of all, that's green, but green in terms of environment. And trees have a lot of, a lot to tell into what we can do in terms of climate change, adaptation, mitigation, the creation of green infrastructure, but also in terms of concepts that we can develop in order to support our cities. So you might be familiar with the bestseller, The Hidden Life of Trees, where you can see the way they communicate, but also at a different pace, which make us think about the way we can act, the way we can create strategies and new forms of communications amongst each other. It's also about the whole canopia, which is created in order to support those underneath, but also biodiversity protection, the green infrastructure and also reminding us, making us think about biomimicry, what we can learn from the environment and implement in our cities, be it in terms of services, infrastructures, in terms of the way we communicate. So in the cities, whose example we shared in our session, we had, we could see these trees everywhere, I would say. So we had examples from Rotterdam and Stuttgart about green infrastructure. That's quite obvious. We talked about the renovation of a whole neighborhood in Umeo, the Oldham neighborhood, to make more energy efficient neighborhood and as well as the mobility plan of Ghent in the car-free city, where you could see all of this, especially if you walk around and look at what's around you. And maybe to conclude, overall, it also brings us to the idea of the need for better, the trees as part of, and as I would say leader of integration, how we can create more integrated cities, more integrated policies for more sustainable, more, for social, environmental and economic transition of our cities.
Thank you very much for this first impression of, from you as an expert. I look at Niels and he looks a little bit nervous. He was not sure how well he can draw. So let's lift this burden from his shoulders. Niels, please, cities, share your drawing, please.
Yeah, obviously.
Closer, right? This is, this is not-
Change my-
Well, this is one way out that you chose, just to-
Ah, we will make it, we will make it. So I hope now it will work.
Yeah?
Can you see something?
Yeah, I see a little bit.
Maybe because I drew it with pencil, so you cannot really see.
Yes, maybe you, just like in school, try to make a picture description.
Okay, well, the essence of this drawing or what you might have seen is that there are ants carrying an elephant. And the essence of this drawing for me is that together we are strong. Because one ant can't move big, large things, but many ants can. And this picture came into my mind after the presentation in the Just City session. Because key of the good examples which were presented had been the work in partnership, the co-creation approach. So instead of trying to be Superman and doing everything on its own, they concentrated on what they're good at and also they acknowledged their limitations. And for these limitations, then they look for partners to be able to implement their innovative projects. And I think that was very efficient and impressive also to me. And in particular, there was one project, Habitat Three from Barcelona, I think which really accomplished this very well, presented this very well. So for example, in the partnership with the city council, they provide affordable housing, social housing for homeless people. And Habitat Three, which is a foundation, they do the acquisition of the empty homes and then they leave it to the city council to rent them out for homeless people. And for the financing of the empty homes, they work with public and private financing institutes. And for the renovation of their homes, they work with social enterprises, which at the same time using the renovation to train social people to have better job opportunities. And then the care of the tenants is done then by local charities to provide services for the tenants to help them get a better life. So anyone brings in what they're good at, nobody really needs to do something new. But that makes it easier to implement such strong and powerful project. And this topic more or less ran through all the projects that were presented in the Just City.
Thank you, Niels. The second round and the third round of short keyword induced questions. We need to finish this in, let's say, five to 10 minutes, just to give you some heads up. But nevertheless, we would like to have examples or pictures. So I asked Eddie two days ago, what would be the keywords for, keywords for your session? And I heard the words asterisks, like asterisks and obelisks maybe, I don't know. And collaboration mechanisms. So if you could elaborate a little bit on that. What I already see is that, that green, productive, just, that probably the principles and learnings also are strongly connected and also merge into one city as one big, big organic, you know, system. Eddie, please.
Yeah, Dorit, I mean, these are not mutually exclusive concepts, obviously. And there's lots of blurring, as you said, between our three sort of city types. It's also important to say that we're crunching everything down here. So the sessions were recorded, please go and have a look if you want to know more details. But in terms of the asterisk thing, so had I been better at drawing, I might have drawn a little picture of asterisks. Because asterisks for me symbolizes one of our city cases, which is Mont Saint-Trois, which is a very small city, 10,000 people, located in the Côte d'Azur in the south of France, a city which has been under huge pressure to develop, to concretize, to sell off land. And for decades now, they have resisted that temptation to develop a strong sense of what they call food sovereignty, a notion of where our food comes from. So fast forward to now, we're talking about zero kilometer food. We talk about during the pandemic, people are really interested about where their food comes from, working with local growers and the notion of circularity, reducing waste. So all of those things have been part and parcel of this small cities approach for decades. And they are super current now and probably deeply unfashionable and probably a bit crazy sounding when they started. So the notion of having a big vision, the notion of having political will, collaboration. You can't fight everyone all the time. Even Asterix has to make strategic alliances. So the notion of choosing your battles and identifying, you know, when you have to stand and fight and when you have to collaborate. And I think the other thing is mixing that long-term vision with a sense of pragmatism. And we see that again with the other cities, with Rotterdam and with Aveiro and with Preston. Each of them having this big picture vision, but being prepared to zigzag and to flex a bit. Because as we said earlier, we can't fully anticipate what's around the corner. So, but the asterisk image is a fantastic image and really makes me think of the bravery that they had when they set off all those years ago. So that's what that's about.
Yes, I think this is something that can stick to the memory of our audience. Thank you very much for this. Marceline, when I, when we talked, you came up with the word, with the keyword courage, with the keyword transversality of climate issues. So please share your contribution with us.
Yes, indeed, thanks a lot. Well, Eddie's already mentioned some, you know, the political will. And I think it's so courage. When we talked about courage during our presentations, we could see there was the need for a strong political will and leadership in order to really take the project further, in order to launch the projects and to ensure their implementations. But this also goes together with having a strong narrative and ensuring the buying. So within the administration and within the, with the constituency, the residents in general. And one of the examples we've seen was really in the case of Ghent, where the city developed a car-free city plan in 2017. And as you can imagine, many people were strongly supporters of it. It's great to be in a city center, we don't have any cars, you can hang out, go for coffees, drinks, especially in a student and touristic city as Ghent. But many people were also opposed to it for practical reasons, for critical usages, but also for convenient, convenience. And obviously, some people needed still to go to the city center by car. So there has been a lot of, well, I'll repeat the word by Eddie, the collaboration. But it was lots of participation, discussions, meeting and discussions with car owners, with retail owners to find the best ways to do it and also to increase this plan to other neighborhoods of the city. Because now it is now enlarged and it is also copied or inspiring other cities in Europe and over the world. So we tend to say that this leadership needs to be, needs to be worn, needs to be in the hands of the political, the politicians. But we also know from lots of work, and here I refer to some work we did with Urbak as well, that it has to come from the administration as well. And it can also, birth can be given inside the administration and then be strongly supported in order to ensure the implementation. The craziness also, as Ed said, bold ideas which then become reality. Moving back to, going to transversality, indeed, another very interesting example we had was from the city of Rotterdam in Poland, which designed a series of regulations to ensure that climate change becomes a priority in the city and that climate change and sustainability concerns are included in all the local policies. So when we asked how it was included, they say, well, you know, it's part of the regulation. So we know we have to keep it in mind. And in these days, when we know that it's very important to work on project-based, beyond silos, that we have to communicate, to know what's happening in the other department, to make more coherent local policies, this approach has been extremely, has been really key in ensuring that it's not only a department of sustainable development or urban planning, this, but that is also supported by everybody else in the administration and the city.
Thank you very much. Niels, we have max, a max of probably three minutes to go. So then we have already five minutes plus for stretching legs. So Niels, you emphasized a lot the role of projects.
Yes, well, in, well, the role of projects, most of the project, well, the examples that were presented all started as projects, mainly they are projects. But also it was important finally, finally that they become a policy, that they might become a program. So in most cases, the examples presented started with a project, testing, trying, developing. And then that was the example of Gedance for Social Innovation and Social Inclusion. I mean, they started in an Urbac network, it was called Postino, and they developed their project as an action plan. But then with the experience from this project and also all the inspiration they received from the other cities of the network, and they started to develop based on this experience, something more steady, something more continuous, really a lasting effect beyond that project. And then they developed policies about like integration models or model for equal treatment. And then also they developed tools, because important for them was the involvement of the citizens, of local initiatives, of third sector organizations. So they developed like citizens assemblies and they developed a participatory budget, which they regularly do. And they installed thematic working groups to constantly work on certain themes with like other social organizations and also companies and so on. But also what was important, they installed like neighborhood houses. So also to provide the physical space for people who like, who want to make a change, they can come together and also the services which they provide here, the neighborhood house, will then co-create it with the users and the providers. So I think this was a key that finally we had not just stuck in a project, which has often like an end and beginning and an end. They said, okay, how can we continuously put this in long-term programs and policies?
Thank you very much. I hope this opens the door a little to people who are interested to really check out the whole sessions, session that was recorded. One last very short line from each of you, probably as little bit as a trigger to the panel debate that we have a little bit later. What would you try from the city level to tell, to integrate, to have integrated into the panel debate maybe? Just one line from Eddie, probably. So what would be your message to policy?
The phrase we've been seeing is believing. So we have to concretize these notions of just, productive and green, give concrete examples and help cities understand, as Norman Poppen said, where do we start? What does this mean? How do we do it? So linking the operational and the high-level policy stuff.
Thank you, Marceline. One sentence.
I would say experiment and have faith in trial and error. It's all about social and technical innovations. So have some faith in you, in your city, in the buying, but also in your own mistakes and be honest about it and try and find the best solutions for your cities.
Thanks a lot. Last but not least, Niels Scheffler.
Well, we have seen that they're inspiring and that there are transferable city approaches out there to make cities more just, more productive, more green, more sustainable this way. I think what'd be great, EU programs and policies could really pick this up and help to make these diamonds, which we heard about, more known and help other cities to transfer and adapt them to their local needs and their situations. Because by this, you were doing- Because by this, we were really first achieving an effect in Europe. Many cities apply these diamonds and which I guess most of them really are transferable.
Well, thank you very much for this very lively presentation. I, I, I found it really enjoyable and I think we could talk or go on talking forever. I hope we delivered some messages to the panel debate a little bit later. And now we have a few minutes to stretch our legs. We'll be back probably twenty past eleven, because, because otherwise nobody has the chance to really grab a good coffee. So let's start ten minutes to, ten minutes to half past, half past, so, so in ten minutes, let's say in ten minutes. Thank you very much, Eddie, Marceline and Niels. Okay, so we're back. Hello, everybody. I hope you had the chance to grab a coffee, you had the chance to stretch your legs and you are back for the last round of speeches, of contributions, of panel discussion about the new Leipzig charter. We are looking forward to a keynote speech that's targeting an EU governance that empowers cities and regions. And for this, we have an excellent speaker, Mr. Simon, Mr. Peter Simon, former MEP, member of the European Parliament, with a very nice, with a very nice piece of art behind you. It looks perfect. Welcome. And the floor, I would say the virtual floor is yours. And thanks for making it, because you have a very tight schedule and we were quite nervous whether you would make it, but this is up and running. So thanks for that.
Thank you very much and thank you very much for the invitation and giving me the chance to speak to you today. Indeed, it was a little bit hectic. I arrived here three minutes before coming from Frankfurt. And coming from Frankfurt brings us to today's topic, because governance within European Union has also something to do, always something to do with multi-level governments, with the questions, who different bodies decide and how they should interact. Coming from Frankfurt, I can tell you, we all often blame the European Union and its relation to the member states, that not everything works perfect in the interaction. Living in COVID times, traveling between the German Bundesländer nearly every week, several times, you see that this is not an European topic only, but sometimes you need to test in this state and the test in that state, not because you're free from a test here, this is a situation I had today. So the interaction between different bodies, having responsibility for a topic is a key question, not only in Europe, but everywhere within Europe, within the cities themselves, within the regions themselves, within the member states themselves, and for sure with in the system of member states within the European Union. Working in the municipality for many years on European topics, working in the region responsible for European topics, working in our foreign ministry, in the Department for European Affairs for several years, and working as an MEP for ten years, gave me an insight in the different levels and how they look to the other level. This means looking from a municipal level to the European level or the European level looking to the municipal level and so on and so on. And this insight was very, for me, important, because I understood that to come to real good governance in Europe, it needed most of all the understanding of each level of governance. So the level of Europe as the level of municipalities, the level of the regions as the level of the state for the other ones. You always have to be able to put yourself in the situation of the other responsible person on the other level to come to results which are broadly accepted by everybody. And this is a problem. In reality, we often have the situation that no matter what everybody speaks positively about Europe, its meaning and what should be done, that the egoism of the different levels still is a big problem for everybody here, working on European topics. This means if you look, for example, on the German national level, I had this in lots of situations, I realized that not putting themselves, for example, enough in the situation of municipalities, I saw that to save interests of the federal level of Germany for five cents makes them willing to give up the interest of one euro important for the municipal level. So on the other hand, I saw the same between the so-called lenders or the regions, and I saw the same also the other way around, top-down from Europe. So the egoism of the each and every level is first something that we have to overcome. And the second thing is when you really want to start to come to, to, to go on a way, to come to a point where on an eye-to-eye level, the European level and the municipal level, the regional level and the federal level deal with each other, you have to honestly be able to explain to your own people and to admit to the other level that not one level has the only right view on a topic, has the only right answer to solve a problem. You always have to admit also that someone else has also power, has also a side on, a view on the things which has to be taken into account. And this not understanding, this not willing to try to put yourself in the shoes of the other level is, I think, until today, one of the key problems of governance. And to give a concrete example, we have the wonderful Committee of the Regions. Yeah. Looking at this on a German perspective, I say, Germany, which is a federal state and always claims that its municipalities are so important, has all in all 24 members in the Committee of the Regions. How many does the lender, the regions give to the local authorities? Three, exactly three. So this shows egoism of the level even in a body which was created for the good work in Europe. But going on, looking deeper in the Committee of the Region, for example, you see that often they produce wonderful papers with wonderful content and conclusions, which could really help to get perhaps a different perspective on problematic points. But to be honest, the question is, who reads them? And looking at the Committee for Regional Affairs, I know there's a wonderful exchange in the, with the European Parliament, for example. Looking at the Urban Inter Group, it worked for many years perfectly to interact also with the Committee of the Regions, but all the other committees, if we are honest, we have to admit that the bird of this important body, which should be a representation in the system of European governance, which should be a link to interact between the different levels, to be honest, in most of the committees, I'm aware and colleagues are aware too, that the work of the Committee of the Region has not this impact as it should have. So this has many reasons. One is again, that perhaps not enough conscience between MEPs exists, that there has to be a stronger and deeper view in the positioning of the local authorities and the regions. But on the other hand, we learn something else from this example. To have the right and to ask for being heard is one thing, but to do something that you are heard is at least as important. And there I have to admit, in ten years, as an MEP, working on many financial dossiers as rapporteur, I had, let me think about it, I think two times, perhaps it was only one time, an exchange with a rapporteur of the Committee of the Regions, they never came. So if you want to be heard, you have to do something that you are heard. Just sending conclusions, reports, whatever, via email or in paper form, everybody should know that this is not enough. So having understanding for each other is a very important thing. Go, going one step back and leaving egoism of your level, but the way you come from behind is a second important thing. Having an open atmosphere of governments where everybody tries to understand is the third important thing. But, and this is my appeal, the really, really, really important thing for good working governance in Europe concerning urban topics, concerning topics which have to do with urban development, with regional policy means that also the local level increases its work towards the institutions to make clearer positions and to be heard better. So being active is one thing that Europe can demand from the local level to come to good governance. The other way around, the local level can expect from Europe the open-mindedness, also for perhaps partly different positioning and views on the topic and should not make the mistake that understanding that local topics, urban policy is important. This does not means that we need somebody on the European level to define what is in concrete at the end, the local important things. I think this definition must be done by the municipalities and the counties themselves. So what can we expect for good governance in Europe from Europe itself? The openness and to also take on board the local authorities while defining what is important, what should be done, in which form, on the European level for the local authorities and municipalities. So this interaction is important. You see, it's not one asks something from another, it's everybody has to deliver on the one side by doing something and on the other side by being open-minded for the interests of the other lands. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Peter Simon. It's, I must personally say, it's always a joy if someone speaks up openly, transparently and directly. So it was a clear message and a clear wake-up call. So, so thank you very much for having time for us and sharing these thoughts with you and also your experience. I really like it a lot when things are illustrated by concrete examples and sometimes this is not the case. So thanks especially for this liveliness too. So.
I thank you very much.
Great. We, we can now announce a speaker that formally studied in one of the most beautiful colleges ever. When I prepared to, Ms. Nula Morgan, to have a, have a look at your CV, I saw that you were in touch in former times with Trinity College. And I can, I can really recommend to everybody to have a look at the library there, it's just great. So I envy you a little bit. But now you're head of the unit that has a really nice nickname Capcom Unit, the head of Unit of Capitalization and Communication of the Urbak Program, Nula Morgan. Thanks a lot for being with us and sharing your speech that focuses on empowering cities through knowledge exchange. Ms. Nula, Ms. Morgan, the virtual floor is yours. Thanks for being with us.
Thank, thank you, Dorothea. And thank you also to the German Presidency Chairman, Deutsche Verband, for inviting me to, to present today. Yes, I did have the pleasure of studying in Trinity College in Dublin, unfortunately not in the very nice historic buildings that you see when you visit the, the library, but in a quite recent seventies structure of the arts plot. But I'm happy to keep the illusion. It is a, it is a very nice, a very nice campus in the center of Dublin. And, and I'm, yeah, very happy to come and talk to you this morning about Urbak and particularly how we can support cities through knowledge exchange, linked to really putting into practice the, the principles of the Leipzig Charter that have been, yeah, so thoroughly discussed over the last few, few days of this conference. I'm, yes, head of the Capitalization and Communication Unit. It's quite a lengthy title, but basically it's the unit that concerns all of the external outreach of the, of the Urbak Program. We're a, we're a European-funded program and so we finance networks of cities to, to accompany them to build their capacities, to share knowledge and find solutions to common problems. I have a few slides to share, so I'll just share my screen. And hopefully you can see the slides. Okay.
Well, let's, yes, it works. Thank you very much.
Perfect. And yeah, so since 2002, the program has facilitated networking, European networking, exchange and learning based on the principles of sustainable urban development. Already at that time, since 2002, Urbak was based on participatory approaches, integrated policymaking, multi-level governance and sustainability. And under the German presidency in 2007, these principles were developed into the, the key basis of the first Leipzig Charter. So this dialogue on sustainable urban development doesn't stay from, from yesterday, of course, it's been going on for a long time. And also this exchange between the European level, national level and the city level. And how exactly does Urbak empower cities? Well, we facilitate and finance networks of cities who come together to tackle a similar issue, urban mobility, for example, or poverty, or inclusion, or creating jobs, really any subject that a city can be facing. And we support them on this journey through these exchange and learning networks at European level, with European exchange and at city level, to develop an action plan, tackle a problem, or to transfer a good practice from another city that they adapt to their own needs. You've heard from some of the cities in, in the previous session, who are a lot better than, than I am, in a better position than I am, to tell you how the participatory and integrated approach that Urbak uses allows them, or even forces them to work across departments to get everyone around the table and have those difficult conversations that are needed for real integrated decisions to be made. And so we have that feedback from, from many of our cities, that, that the, the way that Urbak works with them really doesn't. that the way that Urbact works with them really doesn't, it really forces them to work across departments in a way that they're not used to. But in addition to financing the city networks, which we call this Transnational Exchange and Learning, Urbact Program has two other work streams that help us fulfill our mission to promote sustainable urban development in cities. And I'll give you just one example, a specific example under each. The first is capacity building. We at Urbact, we use capacity building to refer to strengthening the skills and know-how of people working in European cities to manage sustainable urban development, policies and practices in an integrated and participative way. So, in addition to the policy issue or the sectoral challenge that the cities are tackling, we support them with trainings, with tools and methods that they apply each step of the way. This takes the form of a large-scale trainings like our summer university. This year it's been forced to turn into an e-university, just like this conference. We also organize dedicated trainings, for example, for elected officials. We have a session coming up during the EU week for elected officials and produce numerous guides and tools. Because plenty of cities agree on the principles, you know, involving citizens more directly in the process, but are unsure of how to go about it or maybe where to start. So, through training sessions like Urbact University or the national trainings that we organize, we walk city practitioners through the tools that they can use. Folder mapping, for example, like you see in the picture here. Problem identification, engaging citizens. So, we really support them through learning by doing. Of course, other factors that influence a city's capacity to act. Do they have the decision-making powers at local level? And do they have the financial capacity to deliver? Both of those are critical and they vary greatly from city to city and country to country, of course. Urbact can't solve all of those problems, but by providing a multi-level framework that allows the city and the higher regional or national authorities to have that space to discuss, also with EU peers, has certainly been helpful. For all of the cities and other policymakers watching today, also have access to those tools in Urbact's new online toolbox. We've brought together for the first time in an accessible way the complete set of resources used for integrated and participative working that we use with the Urbact city beneficiaries, but also available for you and for anyone to access. It's organized around the action planning cycle and each tool comes with a short description of who it is for to use it. So, I encourage you to dig in there and explore and see if there's anything that can also be helpful for you to use or to share. The third pillar of Urbact's work focuses on knowledge sharing and capitalization. This word capitalization maybe is a little bit difficult to understand in certain contexts, but we mean to capitalize on the knowledge that has already been shared within the Urbact networks and make it available to a wider audience. So, I guess knowledge sharing is a more useful term perhaps. So, we draw, as I say, on the knowledge shared within the networks, contextualizing in the wider European urban policy field and make sure those learnings are available as widely as possible. I'll just talk about one example of the many knowledge sharing projects that are ongoing at Urbact, directly linked to the Leipzig Charter. In 2018, we wanted to take a closer look at how cities understood and put into practice the principles of sustainable urban development, which we call the Urbact method. As I said before, these are clearly based on the Leipzig Charter. So, when we heard that the German Presidency were planning to refresh that document, we wanted to contribute with the experience of cities who have been trying to live those principles. So, we launched a series of city labs, each focusing on a principle from the Leipzig Charter from 2007. So, we focused on participation, on sustainability, on integrated approaches and on place-based approaches. These city labs were practice-focused around some key questions. They gathered together city practitioners, but also regional and national representatives and EU-level organizations. The key questions that we tackled, how does each principle look in 2020? So, from the 2007 Leipzig Charter, how do the principles look in today's world? How were these cities implementing the principle? And where do we have effective examples of these? We have a lot of case studies in the publications and also some who shared with you last week. Where are we struggling in relation to these principles? And how can cities be supported to build their capacities in relation to these principles? So, as I say, we had gathered together all levels because we know these issues need tackling at all levels and each lab produced a short video and a policy paper, which you can see on the screen here, with the detail of the city cases we examined and also recommendations for the new Leipzig Charter and more generally moving forward and implementing those principles. Let me try and sum up quickly the richness of those exchanges that we had here for you today. First, we saw that cities are willing to experiment with the participatory process. Really, some cities looking to redefine the relationship with the citizens as we go. We also saw the extent of citizen participation, how much real power citizens can have to decide on essential topics. For example, in Poland, in Wurz, we saw in terms of regeneration of priority areas. You know, there was a real power that was given to the citizens there to define the process and determine the outcomes. But a stronger framework for promoting new ways of participation, what we call co-design, co-creation, is still needed. Second, we saw that the pillars of the integrated approach, the economic, the social and environmental, and of course, the integration of a city and its territory are still key. But putting this into practice still faces many barriers, not least in City Hall itself. But we have amazing examples, this is working. We also talked about maybe upgrading this pillar model to take into consideration the environmental limits that as a planet we have to deal with. And if the Kate Rayworth donut model, for those of you familiar with it, wasn't a more suitable framework. This hasn't quite made it into the Charter, but I think more and more cities will be transposing this kind of framework to their integrated approach, taking into consideration also the climate emergency that we're facing. Third, resources. Cities, of course, need their own resources to be able to act, especially if the responsibilities are devolved from national level. And for those cities who struggle with small budgets, the small investment in this kind of Urbact exchange pays off with new ideas, knowledge and tested approaches. And finally, no matter the size of the city, many of the challenges faced are this. But special attention needs to go to smaller cities who aren't as knowledgeable about EU funding, who don't have the experience in the European networks, but they do have skill and the opportunity to make a leap ahead. All of the lab papers, the videos and articles from these past two years of work are online in the Urbact website in a dedicated topic for the Leipzig Charter. We have also linked to other relevant good practices that can inspire cities under just green and productive headlines. Again, I invite you to jump in for a closer look and look at those cities that are already implementing the Leipzig Charter principles to get some inspiration. And finally, during these difficult months of the COVID pandemic, we've seen the real value of the community like Urbact that is more than just tools and case studies. It really can help cities practice what the Leipzig Charter is preaching. And I think that this process and the exchange that we've had with the German team has also, the Leipzig Charter authors a thing or two as well in terms of cities' capacity to implement these principles. I leave you with just a few more opportunities to discover more. These are just two of the six that we are organizing during the EU week for regions and cities in October. The first gives a richer look at some of Urbact's results since 2014 with a sneak preview of what's coming next. And the second is dedicated to discovering the Urbact Toolbox in more detail, the one that I showed you earlier. So, I hope to see some of you there to continue some of the discussions there. I would like to thank again the organizers of the German Presidency Team, the Deutsche Verband, for our collaboration over the last two years and also for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Miss Morgan, for this look into this very valuable, inspiring and constructive toolbox that Urbact is, that it's more than a program, but that it's something workable and usable and it provides an immense pool of knowledge, which is already custom-fit to further use. So, thank you very much for explaining all this and describing it. I hand over to Mart Griesel now. He's the director of the European Urban Knowledge Network and he will moderate the panel discussion. In order to just give you a hint of how experienced he is, I can tell you that he's been commissioned by various EU Council presidencies already to take part in the debate, to steer debates. And I think that the last three conferences already aggregated a lot of interesting input to be talked about. I just have these keywords like co-creation, trial and error, how is leadership defined, mutual trust. So, we are really looking forward to the panel debate that will sum up and deepen our knowledge about the new Leipzig Charter. Mart, this is to you now.
Okay, thank you very much, Dorothea, for your kind words. I must say, I'm also looking forward to this political discussion also in light of what has been said earlier today. Let me, because we have relatively little amount of time, so I will go relatively quickly in introducing to you the panelists that we have, the four panelists. Let's start with Kieran McCarthy, who is a re-elected, elected, re-elected independent city councillor in the city of Cork, in the south of Ireland. And he combines his, let's say, day-to-day policymaking with also a very active participation in a committee which has too little impact, according to Peter Simon, the Committee of the Regions. Let's talk about that too. I know Kieran indeed for many years, we know each other quite well. He is a very strong advocate of the urban agenda for the EU, but also he has been involved in the European dialogue process leading to the Leipzig Charter, the new Leipzig Charter and its implementation document. Next, I'd like to introduce you Gustav Hemming, who is an elected board member. Hi, Mr. Hemming, of the Regional Council of the Stockholm Region. So, here we have the spatial level that is highlighted also quite explicitly in this new Leipzig Charter, the Metropolitan Region. And he is also a representative of a European network, which is called Matrix, the network of metropolitan regions at European level. Now, another spatial level that's also addressed explicitly in the new Leipzig Charter and in the urban agenda for the EU is the level of the medium-sized and small and medium-sized towns. This is represented by Mr. Lanfranco di Franco, which is a beautiful Italian name. Mr. Di Franco is the deputy mayor for housing and participation in the city of Reggio Emilia, the capital of one of Italy's most interesting gastronomic regions, if I'm correct. I've been there a couple of times, it's a beautiful region. And he is also, Reggio Emilia is also one of, it's a typical mid-sized town, European town, with approximately 170,000 inhabitants. Mr. Di Franco represents the small and medium-sized towns and cities also at European level as the vice presidents of Eurotown, which is the network of the smaller and medium-sized towns and cities at European level. And then we have, I think, someone who is familiar to most of the audiences, the audience who have been watching also. The other contributor is Emmanuel Moulin, who has been leading the Urbact Program since 2012 already, Emmanuel, that's a long time indeed. So, I didn't realize it was already over eight years that we know each other. Well, let me not further introduce Urbact, just to mention after the nice keynote also of Nuala Morgan, that Urbact has been very active in the preparation of the new Leipzig Charter, both playing an important role also in the further implementation of it and has been also extremely active in the urban agenda for the EU. Now, we have three politicians, elected politicians and a director of a knowledge network, all working with local and regional authorities. That I think is a perfect starting point for our political discussion. What we will do today is to see how these political documents, like the new Leipzig Charter and to some extent also the urban agenda for the EU and the implementation of those principles described in the Leipzig Charter can actually work at ground level. And we're going to do this in three rounds of discussions of each approximately 10 minutes. And I must emphasize to my panelists, this is an extremely short, sort of a pressure-cooking setting. So, I really need to urge you to be very precise and really concrete. I do like, like Dorothea said also about Peter Simon's statement, to be very concrete, outspoken and make it as explicit as possible. The documents that we are referring to are political and abstract by nature. But let's see how we can make it a bit more concrete. To refer to one of the previous speakers, and I made some more references also listening to the other contributions, Norman Poppen said, "If it's not implemented, it's crap." Well, we need to see how to avoid the new Leipzig Charter and the urban agenda for EU being a crap document. This is not what we want, of course. So, we really want to see how to use those documents to actually empower cities, to concretely act within the framework of the documents. Because indeed, as Eddie Adams also said earlier today, seeing is believing. Now, with that being said, I'd like to start the first discussion round. We will look, we structured the panel debate according to the three main pillars of urban policy as mentioned in the urban agenda for the EU and the Pact of Amsterdam, which was adopted in 2016. That means that we will start with a block on funding and cohesion policy. Let's say, refer to better funding, which is one of the pillars of the urban agenda. Then we'll move to regulation, better regulation is another one. And then, let's talk also about better knowledge and better knowledge exchange. So, let's first start with the Committee of the Regions, Kieran. A committee which is too little visible and has too little impact, according to Peter Simon. You can tackle that comment. I would like to ask you, the new Leipzig Charter stresses this multi-level cooperation as one of the principles of good urban policy. Now, you represent local and regional levels within the Committee of the Regions and you work also at a very practical local level in your own city of Cork. What would be needed to truly strengthen? And let's emphasize that perhaps also listening to Peter Simon's words, multi-level cooperation in Europe and how to avoid this egoism of the various governmental levels in Europe. And I must say, I will give you only a few minutes.
True to form, Mart, true to form.
I will be rude today, I'm sorry about that, but it's the only one.
That's okay, that's okay. Thanks very much for the invitation to say a few words anyway. And well done and everyone for organizing the different sessions for this. And just on your question on multi-level governance, I mean, within the cohesion policy, there is a code of conduct and partnership. So, that needs to stay on the table at all times. Also, like the targeted funding around the urban sustainable development and the RDF, I mean, that's really, really important in terms of here's funding. Many cities are short of funding at the moment. I know in my own city of Cork, we drew down some of the urban sustainable development for a new bridge and a new public park and their boat projects are going really well and there's a lot of kind of buy-in. I think ownership is really, really important of any European projects that are being kind of passed down to the local level. Buy-in, hard work. I mean, one of the elements that has completely come out of the urban agenda partnerships is the hard work involved and the not to take for granted cooperation. I think sometimes people think that cooperation is easy, it's not. I think Nula mentioned that various local authorities of different knowledge levels, financial capacities, team capacities. So, that's important to note. And maybe my last is two quick comments. I mean, for me, I'd love to see projects like Urbact scaled up and also Intereg scaled up. I mean, a lot of comments were given about the urban innovative act. about the urban innovative actions this morning. It is a huge challenge for a city to win one of those and actually get on that level, where Aurbach is actually easier to enter at a local level. I know my city at the moment is doing something on pop-up playgrounds with Aurbach and the playful paradigm, which is really, really simple and really down-to-earth. So it's important that we scale up what we're doing as well at the moment. And also, we weave in many of what we're doing, the multi-level cooperation to the SDGs as well, which is something that I don't think anyone has mentioned this morning, but we just need to keep our eye on that. So those are just some initial thoughts in terms of the partnership is the code of conduct and partnership, the urban sustainable development funds, the ownership at local level, scaling up EU projects. There's a lot there, like, to keep strengthening the multi-level cooperation. We need to keep working at that. And there's no silver bullet as well in terms of multi-level cooperation. It's just hard work and hard slog. And even when we were putting together the various drafts of the Leipzig Charter, you know yourself, Mart, we went through like six, I know I was present at about six drafts. No, why, and probably what you were present at, you were there from the very beginning. But it was great that everyone came around the table and everyone was able to be frank and honest and be able to co-create this document together. So we just need to keep that energy up.
Okay, thanks. And it also means that seeing any members of parliament, of course, as Peter Simon said.
I mean, I can respond to that comment very, very briefly.
Yeah, because...
Yeah, I mean, the Committee of the Regions does have a relationship problem with the European Parliament. And I've said it very clearly on the record in the Committee of the Regions as well. And we need to improve that. But we've got a really good relationship with Norman Poppins and DG Reggio and the JRC. But it's a work in progress. I mean, the Committee of the Regions has also come a long way over the last four to five years, as has, I mean, with the present Leipzig Charter, the one to be passed next month and the month after, has come a long way since the first one. So like trends change, ideas change, knowledge changes. And we're a work in progress. But I would agree with some of his comments.
Okay, nice, thank you. Let's move to the smaller towns and cities with Eurotown and the city of Reggio Emilia. Mr. Di Franco, the new Leipzig Charter also emphasises a lot the local level's ability to act. And more specifically, it was also mentioned earlier today, it refers to urban governance and in promoting the policies for the common good. Now, you are a deputy mayor. You are working at the local level in providing services which are referred to as policies for the common good. Services such as public services in general, but also active land use policies and planning and digital transition, for instance. These are some of the key aspects that are very explicitly mentioned in this new Leipzig Charter. I would like to ask you, how do you assess the current contribution of the EU cohesion and funding policy in relation to this notion of the common goods? And how could it really enable you to act, to act better, to empower you as a city? I'll give you also, like, Kieran, three minutes to answer that question.
Okay, I'll try. From my experiences as a representative of Reggio Emilia and Eurotowns, so the European network for medium-sized cities, I think that the perspective of our cities, so medium-sized cities, should be taken into consideration in the setup of programmes and their priorities. So to make it as easy as possible for local authorities to participate and cooperate with all kinds of stakeholders. So I think that the medium-sized cities need to be included in the dialogue and preparation of coal. So we can reflect the actual needs and the projects proved to contribute to solution. And we know also that majority of European citizens live in medium-sized cities. So they need to be involved in the participatory processes. And I think often for us, for medium-sized cities, it's easier to be closer to the citizens. And as you said, in our cities, a collaborative approach and these methods could be effective more than in the bigger ones. For example, in Reggio Emilia, we have a programme called Neighbourhood as a Commons. And we organise neighbourhood labs with co-design moment, which take place in our neighbourhood's social centres. And we try to define the urban innovation project with the actors of the neighbourhood, so citizens and other associations and so on. And the aim of this project, for example, is to close this co-design process with the so-called citizenship packs that sets the terms, conditions, and also public investment to devise the sustainable innovation projects. With this programme, we try to use a scientific methodology to put a wide variety of community-based urban innovation and experimentation projects. For example, in the last five years, so from 2013 to 2019, we signed 163 citizenship packs and with an amount of public investment nearly of 2 million euros. So I think this is an example. And closing, our cities obviously provide a privileged framework from promoting innovation, discussion, and on governance, regulations, finance, and also for sharing knowledge and exchanging our experiences at a transnational level. So I think these elements are the basis of the new EU policy that we are building.
And in relation to this new Leipzig Charter, I mean, does it help you also in your day-to-day practice dealing with these issues already?
Yeah, because this kind of labs has to rewrite our goals every, I mean, every month, every year. So we can follow the changing of our community. And I think it's also the aim of the new Leipzig Charter to improve instruments that are linked to the reality we are living. So also, of course, after coronavirus, we are changing all our approaches and our tools to cooperate in that with citizens and also with a multi-level discussion method to approach every part of our community. So the public community, the public-private community, and social and civic actors in general.
Thank you. Let's now switch to another spatial level, also addressed again in the new Leipzig Charter, the level of the Metropolitan Region, with you, Mr. Hemming. I would like to ask you, I mean, the new Leipzig Charter also takes place against the background of the new cohesion policy at the European level. I would like to ask you, what are your expectations concerning the promotion of this new, well, not really new, but of course, the promotion as a political factor of importance of regional cooperation and empowerment of local authorities? How do you see this working across administrative boundaries in relation to cohesion policy? Dorothea, give me to unmute, please. Yeah, go on.
Yeah. So, thank you. Do you hear me now?
Yeah, perfect.
I think that one of the key aspects to take into consideration in this question is that the differences between different political cultures and different member states are huge when it comes to the possibilities for multi-level working. In Sweden, for example, we have a rather long, and in the Stockholm region, a rather long tradition of working in multi-level cooperation. And we have strong municipalities. We have a strong state. And we have, during the latest decades, got stronger regions as well. I think that my prime expectation is that what the European Union needs to do in the cohesion policies is to really stress the synergies between the different levels of governance, especially when it comes to urban issues, when it comes to climate change, when it comes to education within bigger labour market regions. And that there are a lot of advantages of the metropolitan areas are actually, they goes beyond the municipal borders. So in a country like Sweden, I think it's important that the European policies indicates that, points out that you should work together, continue to work together. When it comes to countries with weaker municipalities or municipalities with small powers and small resources, I think the European Union should point out that that can be a disadvantage for those countries when it comes to realise the advantages or the synergies in the multi-level governance. And the same thing about the regions, that while the regions, they are often intermediary, they are often subsidiary. Because, I mean, as Kieran said and Mariana said earlier, the municipal and city level, they are, I think, the most inhabitants has a closer connection in their election of their politicians than on the regional level. But the regional level can be really important to realise, to make real the advantages that goes beyond the municipal borders. So I think, to conclude, I don't think we need new regulations. I think the funding programmes should point out cooperation is key to get the full advantages. And to point out that countries that don't have a good balance between the different levels might miss some opportunities to get the full potential in this. Thank you.
Yeah, we talk about cohesion policy. Now, I know there's a strong lobby in the European Parliament from the Urban Inter Group, for instance, to raise the level of investment within the next cohesion policy programming period from 6% to a higher percentage of the structural fronts, going into the direction of, let's say, 10%. What is your opinion on that? And I'd like to ask the same question to the other politicians, like Mr. Di Franco but also Kieran McCarthy. What is your stance? And I would like a very short answer from your side. Would you be in favour of a higher budget for sustainable urban development in Europe? Up to, higher from 6%, let's say, in the order of 8 or 10%?
Do you ask me?
Yes, please, yes, Mr. Hemming first and then Mr. Di Franco, Kieran McCarthy.
I think it would be a good priority within the budget of the European Union to give as strong incentives as possible for working with the urban synergies. So yes, in that aspect. But as a Swedish citizen, I also need to say that we are not in favour of a generally higher European budget. But give priority to urban and cooperation and cohesion politics in that aspect.
Would you agree with that also, Mr. Di Franco?
I don't know a politician who is against a higher budget. For the sustainable urban development. And also, it's important that all type of cities can benefit from budget line and not only the big cities, because we reflect the voice of most people in Europe. And some of them are living in perio and rural area. So it's on our level and the connection to the rural area, where the major challenges are in order to convince people that we are all better off in a strong and sustainable Europe. And also the new needs of ICT and infrastructural connection after the coronavirus. So it's, I agree.
Yeah, and Kieran McCarthy, would you agree also with the lobby of the European Parliament?
Yeah.
Very short question. Very short answer, sorry.
That's an easy question, yes. We've been advocating for 10%. There isn't a huge added value to the sustainable, the urban sustainable development funding. There really is. I mean, I've seen what it's done in my own city. Plus, like, some regions are more developed than others. Like Ireland, for example, has regions that are more developed. And we're not entitled to ERDF funding that would give you a lovely train line or a lovely, some great transport infrastructure. But are my local authorities still earning the same as some of the other, maybe not so developed cities and regions? So no, it does add immensely to a city that's struggling for funding.
Okay, thank you. Let's continue with another question that you might also answer with, let's say, in a short amount of time, given the limits that we are dealing with. It's often said that Europe is a continent of small and medium-sized cities. That's also referred to in various ministerial conclusions, for instance. And that also brings us to another political, let's say, almost a dichotomy. At least, it depends a bit on how you see it. What we try to do with the, what the German presidency is doing with the new Leipzig Charter is to sort of lift the dichotomy between urban and rural policies, or at least between urban and rural areas. I mean, how do you see this relationship between urban and rural in the perspective, within the context of cohesion policy and, let's say, the wider, let's say, EU urban policymaking framework?
Who's that for?
It's for you, Kieran, sorry.
Oh, we need more and more integrated territorial approach. I mean, you mentioned urban rural within the Committee of the Regions, and all of a sudden, everyone forms sides. And if we agree within the Committee of the Regions, like the rural element and the urban element are in two different committees. And so in one sense, we actually really never talk to each other. So, I mean, what's great about the Leipzig Charter is that it does talk about bringing the urban and rural together. So hopefully, something will come out of that call. But we need to work hard to break down those contentious sides.
Yeah, would you also agree with that, Mr. Di Franco? Coming from a smaller region indeed?
I think that we have some points, some key actions to link rural and urban area. And of course, the need to rethink the access to the digital tools and infrastructure as part of the rights of citizenship and as, I think, a precondition of all type of collaboration with citizens. And also launching a great operation of digital literacy. So I think nowadays, this maybe is the first key, then to make all our programmes with a experimentation of sustainable innovations. And this also obviously involves the link between rural and urban. And also, we have to try to move from a neighbour level to a most polycentric level to support local commerce, community-based care assistance and also other public or social services. and also other public or social services, so.
And you, Mr. Hemming, how are you dealing with the, sometimes they need a political opposition or, well, sometimes even created between urban and rural, dealing with metropolitan regions in your case? Please unmute first before answering the question. You need to unmute, yes?
I think that in Sweden, actually, the material differences or inequalities between rural and metropolitan areas are not really significant. So it's most, but there is a risk that political forces are like playing up conflict between rural and metropolitan areas. And it might be hard for the metropolitan areas to get possible, get the possibility to solve problems with transport, with integration, et cetera, if there is too much tension towards the other parts of the country outside the metropolitan area. So I think there is a need to, even here, define the synergies because there is much more to gain. I mean, the countryside in Sweden or the smaller regions and municipalities outside the metropolitan area in Sweden actually have a lot to gain from a successful capital metropolitan area as that is a strongly supportive cluster and structure for the enterprises all around Sweden, but people do not know this. So I think we need to all the time stress that strong countryside, strong countryside regions and strong capital and metropolitan regions, they are actually, this is not a conflict, this is a synergy.
But why is it so difficult at the political level? Because we have these very strong supporters of rural policy with its own agricultural fund, of course. I mean, we are discussing now in the midst of discussions on the new multi-annual budget at the EU level. I mean, if we all agree about the importance of synergies between urban and rural areas in this wider region, why is it so difficult to realize it also at the European level?
Well, I think that, of course, there is a lot, this is a political dimension also. And there is a feeling, even in a well-developed countryside like the one in Sweden, there is a feeling of losing resources or having less opportunities. And then, of course, in other, in some countries in Europe, the difference between countryside and metropolitan areas are much bigger. But in a way, this is also populist discourse that to play up a difference between the countryside and the cities. And I think multi-level governance and a good cohesion policy is very, very important to counteract perhaps controversy that is not always based on facts and realities, but on feelings.
Yeah. And Kieran, what is the Committee of the Regions actually doing with this sort of artificial, sometimes artificial dichotomy between urban and rural policies? I mean, you represent a political body at the EU level, actually.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I find it's quite difficult. I mean, I'd have to say a lot of our rural representatives are very vocal, they speak up a lot. And I'd say, this is from my experience, and some of the urban representatives don't speak up enough. That's kind of what I've seen. Like, now, if you looked at the opinions the Committee of the Regions have been producing, it's balanced in terms of urban and rural. But in terms of people banging the desk and wanting something for their region, and let's have a look at this now, it is going towards the rural. I mean, I'm with a smaller political group within the Committee of the Regions. And many of them, actually, if I mention urban, many of them are from rural backgrounds, many are from Central Eastern Europe. And they're kind of going, no, 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 we don't want that. So sometimes you might get outvoted. I know as well, from a member state perspective, I mean, I'm a member of the committee of my managing authority, of my funds. And there's probably six people out of maybe 35 members that are urban orientated. So even at the managing authority level, like, there's this rural orientation. So we have to fight, I think, as urban practitioners, we need to fight more for our share and not to be afraid of asking for it as well. Because politically, the rural people, I think, are, rural politicians are slightly ahead in the race. That's just from my experience, that might be the experience of other kind of politicians, but this is coming from the perspective.
Well, let's see, if, after the adoption of the new Leipzig Charter, this would help also to continue that debate. And I think it's about time to start the third round of our discussion, which is focusing now on knowledge and on this exchange. I would now mean, I did not involve in Malum Mulan yet, but it's high time to talk a bit about the importance of knowledge exchange, as already introduced also with Novella Morgan. We've seen in this series of conferences on empowering cities to act that there are many examples of creative, innovative cities and regions that are fit for future. And that actually brings me to the next question. Some of the questions I already prepared were already answered by Novella Morgan, so I believe provides a bit, Immanuel volunteers for that. But I would like to ask you a more general, but also at the same time quite complex question. How do you really assess this possibility of transferability of knowledge? To put it differently, can we always learn from the diamonds that Niels referred to? Are the challenges really the same as Novella just stated in the different cities? How do you deal as a knowledge exchange or a knowledge program at European level with the different political dimensions and contexts in relation to knowledge exchange and learning? Just an easy question for you to start with, Immanuel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, first, we should look at where we are in our back. So what are, I mean, to have in mind, what are our assets? Because we cannot say how we deal with such things if we don't know where we are. So where we are in relation to the principle of Leipzig Charter, that we share this in common. The first point is that for us, this is not a theoretical exercise, the Leipzig Charter. It is really supporting in practice cities, first point. Second point, where we are before speaking about this transfer of experience, you mentioned in different contexts, I have well understood your question, Mart, is first, we have in our DNA the integrated and participatory approach of the Leipzig Charter since nearly 20 years, simply because we started with the experience of the five neighborhood. And when you are living in the five neighborhood, you know what it means. I mean, as politician, to work with this neighborhood. Secondly, we work with territories concretely. By the way, we have some problems now with this, I mean, situation of having to work remotely. But in any case, we are anchored in territories. So every city involved in our networks has to set up a baseline to describe the territorial situation, yeah, and so on. Like, I could go more in details. And thirdly, I think it's very important, it's what I want to make the link with your question, is the fact that we are a multi-level instrument. And I think many people don't see that. And this was also a point in our discussion with all the partners during the negotiation with the Commission and with the member states. We are a multi-level instrument, it's so important. It means that, yes, we are working for cities, but we are totally aware that urban development is a competency of member states, that cohesion policy is a responsibility of the Commission, and that it was said, I think, very well by Peter Simon, that a good understanding of each level is key to success for urban policies. How can we do this work well if we have not a good understanding of all levels? If we don't experience every day all levels? You know, it was also discussion we had together, Mart, yeah? So it means that we, the fact that we are embedded in a multi-level framework with the Commission and the member state deciding about the action of we are proposing to cities is very important because we know to work with them. And the fact that we have this framework is very important. We will have this framework also for the future as a European territorial cooperation program, allow us to adapt to various situations in countries. And we have reinforced it through a national back point for Germany's Deutsche Fernbahn, by the way, thank you for, which allow us to work closer to the local situation and then to be more able to develop and adapt this transfer of experience from one city to the other, experiencing and living in different texts.
Yeah, thank you. And the final question, a moral and short answer, please. How can the new Leipzig Charter actually support URBACT to empower cities? I mean, how do you see that relationship between Leipzig Charter and the new URBACT program?
I would say, in any case, I would say that Leipzig Charter has already supported us. No, but if I may say, in the way that in the process, working on the Leipzig Charter, it was a way for us to look again on all the principles we are using. And in the future, to have this Leipzig Charter in the background, it's very important because I think for us, it will be a feu de route, we say in French. It's the background, a roadmap. And for the next programming period, we want really to put the Leipzig Charter on the front. So saying, okay, these are the principles we will use for working with cities during the next seven years. So, and I think in this way, it's very important.
Okay, that's good to know. And it also leads me to the, I would like to ask, to close with that. I mean, you're saying already how you are going to use the Leipzig Charter. Kieran McCarthy, Gustav Hemming and Mr. De Franco, how are you going to, what are you going to do to promote the new Leipzig Charter at the local level once it will be adopted by the ministers responsible for urban matters? Very brief, very brief again, because I see that Christian Luton Law is already ready for his final remarks. So before that, I would like to give Kieran, Gustav Hemming and Giorgio Di Franco, very briefly, the opportunity to tell us how they will promote the Leipzig Charter at the local level.
I know, Mart, we have an opinion going through, actually, on it at our next plenary in mid-October, so there'll be a significant discussion on it. So that's quite positive. Now, don't worry, the opinion won't change anything what you've actually written. It's a declaration really from us going, look, this is fab, this needs to be worked on. And I know we've been calling as well for a somewhat of local governments involved in the urban agenda, perhaps, to be set up as well. So there's a few elements there that we're going to have to think about. Thanks.
Just need to make sure that people actually read the opinion, right? As Peter Simon also said, you can produce nice documents, but people need to read it, yes.
The opinions are read, I mean, the, I mean, the Commission, yeah. We're working on our wider institutional roadmap at the moment, so we'll get there, we'll get there.
Okay. And you, Mr. Hemming, what about you and Matrix?
Well, I think this is a very good tool where the awareness is not so big as it should be. In the Stockholm region, I think we have quite well in our regional development plan, we always already map in the questions of the Leipzig Charter, the new Leipzig Charter. But I think it would be a good idea if the national level also informed the municipalities about this. So I think this is a tool for everyone who sees the potential in this multi-level. So spreading, disseminating information about this is also a very important tool, I think. Thank you.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. There's a mutual responsibility there also, from the national level to the local and regional levels. And what about you, Mr. De Franco?
Medium-sized cities, as cities of your towns, I think would like to play a crucial role in implementing and promoting the Leipzig Charter at the local level, so to inform the cities and citizens about new prospect and possibilities. So we, our general assembly of your towns in October will have the Leipzig Charter, the new Leipzig Charter as the main point of the agenda. Also, the city of Rajamilja, that has always been an international location, will promote and prove the Charter to be a part of the strong and sustainable Europe. So we will communicate and promote and we, of course, use all the network of your towns and the partnership and the relation to promote the Charter. So we will want to, we want to play an important role in this.
Okay, that's good to hear. But this actually brings us to the end of this political discussion already. I mean, I had a look at this final questions, there were not that many from the participants. But just to refer to one, which is asking about the need to make the Leipzig Charter, to actualize the Leipzig Charter also in relation to the pandemics. Now, you might know that we have been involved in providing some support to the German presidency and we did discuss this issue, of course, extensively. Actually, we did not really change the Charter itself that much because we thought it was already offering so many possibilities for addressing also, let's say, disruptions like this pandemic, that the Leipzig Charter itself was actually quite COVID-robust in its way. So I invite you really to read the Leipzig Charter, the new Leipzig Charter, and to see if you can actually also work with that at the local level. That being said, I'd like to give the floor back to our moderator, Dorothea. The floor is yours. I stole some of your time, but we also started a bit later, so I hope you apologize to me.
Exactly, exactly, Martin. There's absolutely no need to apologize, it was very interesting. When I was laughing, I had some time to go through the Slido comments and so it was very enjoyable to find the reactions there. So my dear fellow moderator, you had to moderate this session. If you, as an expert, close your eyes, let it sink in for 10 seconds, max, what would be the thing, the message that you take home from this discussion?
Yeah, well, I will not wait for 10 seconds, but let me do it on the spot. Well, it is good to see, of course, that there is this wide political support. And I must say that also confirms the experience that we had. We have been involved in organizing the European dialogue meetings. And we've come to a point now where this draft Leipzig Charter is almost, I mean, it's almost final. We don't expect that many changes anymore. What I find really interesting is, of course, this true, let's say, translation of the political principles in practice. I think, I mean, the proof of the pudding is in the eating, or seeing is believing, or whatever you would like to call it. I mean, if it's not, again, what Norman Poppen also said, if you cannot implement it, it is crap. And I think it's really up to the political level, up to politicians at the national level, but also at all the other governmental levels, regional, local and European level, including also the DG of Norman Poppen himself, to make sure this new Leipzig Charter becomes a living document. I think the German, when the original Leipzig Charter was adopted in 2007, I think Germany did an excellent job and they managed to emphasize over and over again the importance of the original Leipzig Charter. I would like to see this new Leipzig Charter also to be the leading document for, let's say, almost the next decade or so. I mean, it covers so many different political aspects, but in a rather abstract way. And to make it really this living document, it needs, it means that it needs to be taken up also by the different practical political levels. And there are quite a few truly political messages still in that Charter. I think this whole emphasis of the common good. I mean, we would need to spend a full hour or more to discuss that, what that would really mean in practice. But it does mean that indeed, some politics, which are now, let's say, standard national politics, will need to change. And it will be really interesting to see how local elected politicians or regional elected politicians would actually, could actually work with a document, perhaps to go to their national ministers to say, listen, you subscribe to that document, what are you doing at the national level or what are you doing at the European level? I think that might be, that might, let's say, create a very interesting political dynamic that I would like to see to work in practice.
Thank you a lot, Martin. We come to the end of our conference, not only to the conference, but to the three conference sessions, so it's a whole web conference series. And I would like to remind you also, to you, dear audience, that there's a poll that asks, the Slido poll that is asking for feedback is up and we are really also in the name. and we are really also in the name of the Association for Housing, Urban and Spatial Development, that we are really grateful if we get feedback, we can work with this, process this, so that would be very welcome. Well, I was looking for a transition from me to the Secretary General in order to give us a little wrap-up speech or some messages. And I had prepared something, but I found the Slido comment of Henk Baumann much better. Asterix and Obelix is a great source. The only thing we miss is the secret power drink. So, Christian, if you wrap up the three days, do we have power drinks with us or where would it be? So with this, I thank everybody very much and I give the floor to the final words of Christian.
Yes, thank you very much, Dorothia. This is really a very nice question. But I think that we have seen those who have been participating the three days, the three web series, that either the cities already have found their power drink or they don't need it. Because I think we have seen that they already run a good integrated participatory urban development for transforming their cities to just green and productive places for the common good. And this is, for the examples we have seen, also very well embedded in a multi-level governance approach. So, and I think also the Leipzig Charter will not be such a power drink. There is a lot of content to it, but you just not only swallow it and then you are powerful. But it's a long way to get to this. And this was also reflected very much, I think, in all our examples from the cities, that they have a lot of long-term strategies with very good innovative projects then. And they have really a commitment to follow it. And what's really very impressive for me, who was not so much involved the last 10 years into all these European urban development issues, exchange of knowledge, transfer, what a power the networks like and the programs like URBEC and Matrix and Euro towns can bring also to the ground with innovation, with the exchange. Because the cities really very much support each other, encourage each others in developing new approaches to tackle current and future challenges. And this is my first thank you also to our partners and supporters for this conference. It was really great to have the URBEC program on board, Matrix and Euro towns. And this was also great, because this partnership really reflects one territorial message of the new Leipzig Charter, which is the same message as for the territorial agenda, which is now also rewritten. We need a powerful urban areas of all sizes in Europe, and especially also the medium-sized and smaller cities and the city regions, because otherwise we will lose big parts of the European territory if we don't really address also this urban issue to cities of all sizes. And what struck me also very much is that by all the speeches and again by the local practices, the spirit of this integrated participatory approach in the common good of the Leipzig Charter has already found its way, or let's put it in another word, it has found its way into the Leipzig Charter. So as we had a very broad and intensive dialogue with cities, representatives, network organizations, major searches, regional and national authorities, the European Union, the Comittee of the region. So we really had an approach that, yeah, the Leipzig Charter is already sometimes a lot implemented in all this. So this was also very often seen in the web conference. So thank you now to our great moderator, Dorothia Pahlenberg, also the perfect preparation and moderation of the practical sessions by the URBEC experts, Marceline Bono, Eddie Adams and Nid Scheffler, were very, very important for us. And finally, also Mark Kriesel from UKN for moderating the last political panel, he, as he already mentioned, is one of our important partners for the team that is supporting our national ministry for drafting the Charter. And very special thanks goes especially also to our national ministry for the interior, to giving us the possibility to organize this web conference session and also to the transfer, the formerly planned, yeah, big conference into this web session series. And last but not least, also to my colleagues, Heike Mages, Jonas Scholze and Hauke Meyer, who really did a great job in preparing this web conference. For us, it was the first big conference in the internet. So as Dorothia already said, for us, your feedback by Slido is very welcome to us, not only saying what a great conference this is, but also remarking what we could do better in the next time, because we all want to learn and to improve for those kind of events in the future. And I can really encourage all the people that didn't have the time to see all the sessions live, go back to YouTube, it's all recorded, because we had very interesting speeches. I especially remember the keynote in the first session by Niklas Mark, and as I already mentioned, very lively and interesting presentations in talks of cities. So you can still have a look and this is also one main advantage of such a web conference, to be able to record it and to watch it later. But for me personally, and I think I speak for a lot of you watching these web conferences, this is not at all a substitute for a real conference where we sit together in a big hall, because we lose a lot of direct communication and interaction we would have had in a real conference. And I think the talking and interlinking in the breaks is especially missing and also the feeling of being a real community of urban actors sharing the same concerns, beliefs is much stronger if you sit in a big hall together and see each other. And finally, for me, as the last speaker, it's also quite strange. And I felt in the first session, when I also had the final words, it's like, it's quite strange to end my speech and then you're alone in your room and not continuing the talks by a joint coffee with the visitors of the conference. So that's why I really hope that we see us all face to face in the near future, because I think social distancing can be not the way to make urban development and to continue to make our cities better. Thank you very much again and see you in the near future. Bye.